Yeah, you're right.
I am calling this August 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Mankas Early School Board to order. Heather, please tell us the roll call.
Pam Cuffinger?
Hi.
Aye.
Katie Kehoe-Holby?
Here.
Emily Hedgeson-Brown?
Here.
Pam Hunter?
Present. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in the Lord Jesus Christ. I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Just a reminder for the board members, there's no audience, just make sure your cell phones are on mute. I want, I just want to remind everyone that this meeting of the Board of Education is, Board of Education in public is in public rather than, let me start that over. I want to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public rather than a meeting with the public. Right, we have two times that we can participate in, in public participation. The first time we, we have public participation is when we have items from the public that are items about what's on the agenda. And then the second time is at the end of our board meeting where any citizen can bring up any concerns they have to the board.
I approve the agenda.
Okay.
With corrections to, actually, F and H, that Jessica Schneider is ESS teacher, not her official and great rival is halftime high school LP.
I'll sign that.
Pam, may I have a call at the place?
Katie Kehoe-Holby?
Aye.
Pam Cuffinger?
Yeah, yeah, aye. Yay.
Victor Figueroa?
Aye.
Pam Hunter?
Aye.
Emily Hedgeson-Brown?
Aye.
Pam, may I have approval of amendments? Don't?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 19th, 2023 regular meeting as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we have approval and a second. Heather, can you call?
Okay.
Katie Kehoe-Holby?
Aye.
Pam Cuffinger?
Hi.
Aye.
Pam Hunter?
Aye.
Emily Hedgeson-Brown?
Aye.
We have a public participation. Okay. Okay, done next item on the agenda. But before I do that, I just want to recognize a board member really fast. On behalf of the board, I'd like to just do a shout out to Pam. Pam, it's a belated birthday. All up to you, but yesterday was your birthday and we just want to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you. That's why I'm in Utah.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the next one. District Accountability Report.
So I'm in the process of organizing the district accountability committee now. I've been in contact with the previous leadership of that group. And so we're in the process of building that. And this upcoming year will look a little bit different than the previous two years that were designed to provide a baseline understanding about the school district operates. This upcoming year, they'll be taking more of an advocacy role and working in their capacity bringing recommendations to the Board of Education.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to the next item. Item seven, Board Reports. Ms. Cuffinger, you have the LRC, please.
Um, I don't have too much to say. We are meeting August 25th, next Friday. And that will be our final meeting for last year. And we will also be looking at all of the suggestions that have been put forth for legislation, including ours, that was sent by Victor into Matt and submitted to CASB. So until we have that meeting, there's not much going on right now, of course, because legislation is not in session. So, so I have a report after the 25th.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Any questions, anyone? Okay, I am going to give a report for CASB. I just have a few items. It's more informational and reminder. We have a full conference that's gonna focus on specific board topics. And at the end of that conference, we have the delegate assembly, which will vote on the amendments that are, that were presented or that were put together by all the districts in Colorado. So that is October 6th and 7th in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. I just want to recognize CASB as, you know, within the context of trying to move the delegate assembly meeting around Colorado so that districts across Colorado can attend these meetings more easily. And I do also want to recognize CASB because this will be the first meeting where it will be also delegates or representatives, the board members will be allowed to vote online for amendments. This is the first time. It was something that the delegate body wanted and it'll be the first time it's happening. Haven't seen the details around that yet, but hopefully we'll see it soon.
So we have participation, participation that way.
It's, yeah, I mean, that was a major thing for rural school districts because many of them don't attend these meetings as we've talked about in the past. So when we vote, we're gonna have much more of a broader consensus from rural districts. The next thing I want to just make everyone aware is there are some different monthly meetings this year that they're offering. And there are some monthly meetings that are being offered that are the same as last year, such as President's Cafe is going to start again in August and go throughout the year. And then they have a new, they have the Rural Board Membership Roundtable, which is what I usually attend. And that has started in August already. But then they have a new meeting and it's called the Mountain Resort Cafe. And these are mountain resort districts coming together to meet. And again, a lot of these things are about current topics, shared ideas and best practices. Those are the topics that we would spot in these meetings. And then they have another new one called Key People Cafe. The, what's in parentheses under this meeting is Superintendent, Secretary, Secretary of the Board. I think that they're trying to just reach out again to various groups that maybe hadn't had an opportunity to provide feedback. And again, these are key, what they say, these are monthly virtual meetings with key people from around the state to discuss topics, share ideas and best practices. So if you go on the CASB website, you will see that any of us can attend those really and you can sign up to attend when you like to attend. And then really quickly, first semester regional meeting is coming up is in September. That is where all the regents from our district, which is Region 12, will come together and meet with CASB. And we submitted as a, as a board, various topics that we like to see in these meetings. And I haven't heard and I haven't seen the agenda yet, but as soon as we do, hopefully some of those topics will be on there. Some of the appointments will be on there. But I know when we met last year with CASB's new president, we certainly provided information and feedback to him about how critical that was because we didn't feel like we connected with the last semester regional meeting.
How many of us are signed up? I have yet to sign up.
Yeah.
I was kind of waiting to look at the agenda for the fall regional. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be on the town schedule.
Yeah, I know that right now, I believe it's Pam and I.
Okay.
The last guy I heard, I signed up for it. Did you, did you get Tim's name?
I think we got it. I thought we had everybody, but I thought we had four people signed up.
Okay.
For fall or for December? Fall. October. Yeah, it's in September.
It is September 27th.
I have a little work. Okay.
Okay, and then lastly, as Pam indicated, the Board of Mankas submitted two major resolutions that we hope to see on, in the booklet that will be provided toward the end of September. I did get a, an email from Matt Cook. It wasn't directed to me, but to the group as a whole across the state, basically saying that we received your resolutions. And there are some resolutions that are similar, so we're, I'll be reaching out to you guys about the resolutions that are similar. I haven't heard from him, so so I'm assuming at this point that all resolutions are still as, as we submitted them.
And I think for clarity for the public is both of those resolutions were really in regards to teacher pay.
Both for, because for teacher pay. Thank you. And anything else? Do you? All right, I am done with mine. And then we have Ms. Holby?
Yeah.
BOCs.
BOCs. So you have the report that was in the packet. I don't want to be redundant, so if you guys have any questions, please speak up. But you know, as per our usual schedule of meeting, we did district updates. You know, everybody, I think of the districts, we were the ones that had the most board meetings and, and retreats. So I, there was Debbie Willem, who's from Bayfield, who is the president of BOCs, did ask who was going to be returning to the BOCs or to, who was going to be looking for reelection for their own terms and therefore possibly continuing on with the BOCs. And so most districts, the BOCs members were seeking a second term. So I think that is going to be a really good for BOCs and to have that kind of continuity on the board, especially as they, as we move over into, you know, some, some difficult times. So I did kind of give you a little bit of update on Monazuma Cortez's petition to become its own independent administrative unit. There is a timeline laid out inside my report. It is, it's fairly swift. September 1st of the school year, they have to submit their proposal, if I have that correct. Then the CDE will review the application by the 22nd of September. October 1st, an independent third-party financial audit of both the district as well as BOCs will happen. And then CDE has up until November 30th. Now, my understanding is that it can stretch a little bit if they have more query or questions around that and that's not entirely unusual. They can have up to an additional 60 days. My biggest question on that was where there was comment. We really, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Porter, there really isn't a place for our district to comment unless they're asking for additional information or if we dispute the CDE's findings. Am I wrong on that? Yeah.
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna find out.
Yeah.
Just on this topic.
Yeah.
We, on Wednesday of this week.
Yes.
We have an hour scheduled with all the school districts, with the exception of Cortez and BOCs, to discuss this timeline and also to discuss, you know, how we can make our voices heard either in favor or not in favor of Cortez's application.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, so that's, that's, so BOCs is clearly turning a lot of its attention to that. Um, I think something that would be of interest, especially with our Chrissy being here. I know that BOCs did, is now working towards getting Medicaid reimbursement. So there was $72,000 in Medicaid reimbursement. So they were, they're looking to, which I think is a really important financial piece that had not been there. And I know that that had been ventured around whether they could apply for some of that federal aid. So they are and they'll be moving forward with filling, making sure that they're in compliance in order to get that funding. That's a great other revenue stream. They are currently, they have all positions filled, but as I put in the report, many of those positions are virtual services and that's gonna be very challenging. So they have, they have contracts with both a VocoVision, I believe it's called, which does virtual services for various different, I think speech therapy was a big one. And then they also have contracted with a job placement company that is like a trap. And I think the comparison would be like a traveling nurse or a travel, someone who comes in. But there is a no compete clause, so that person could never, like, BOCs wouldn't be able to hire them afterwards. So I think it's still very challenging to find qualified people, which is, I think, the biggest concern as we move forward. Not only with this forthcoming school year, but in the, in the, you know, immediate future. That's it. Any questions?
Did the Cortez say anything about the process and how to take this timeframe this long?
You know, I did ask.
Just looking at the dates, you know, I'm, I'm wondering how they're gonna get a financial audit and how long it takes us to get our financial audits done. That has to be in by October 1st, really.
Yes, yes.
They're pushing.
I did make the point that my understanding is when Durango pulled out that it had a very succinct plan already in place prior to bringing it to this, to the school board. That, no one has seen that plan as of yet from Monazuma Cortez's district. But Representative, BOCs representative from the school board, Sherry Wright, did say that they were, they would be, they would be able to, they had a plan and they were, it will be ready according to the time.
Can I ask a question around, we went through some of the process that CDE is asking for. Now, if they're asking the grant, they've got the pack?
I do not see that.
CDE does not require that. That's, that's.
I understand that. That sounds just to push it up as part of the process or is there anything in there?
No, they're.
I know they're not required, but.
Their process is to hear from the existing BOCs board and then the school districts up there.
I did not see that in there. I do have, and I can share it with you, and if everybody else would like it, the application for a new or recognized administrative unit. And that really does, if you want to peer through that, you are welcome to. You can highlight stuff. But I pulled those dates out of here. I know, sorry. Yeah, but I will ask. That's a good, no, that's a good question.
Our community is a big part of our schools.
Yeah.
Mankas at least.
Yeah.
And so to not have an avenue for them to receive some feedback just wasn't sound, right?
Yeah, and I think Emily had a question in regards to one of the last bullet points from the ED report. The Councilor Core Grant, right? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, the Councilor Core Grant was listed as a grant that was, still had another, I think, year left. And it was applicable to mid-school and, and high school. And my question was, are we benefiting from that? Do we use it? How do we use it? I've never heard of it. So I just wanted to clarify what that was.
Yeah, so we are a beneficiary of that, even though we weren't originally on the grant itself when it was written. We weren't named as a school district on it, yet they extended it to us as well. It is being led by their former executive director. Adria is leading that Councilor Core Grant as it builds out processes for the middle school that align to the I cap process, which we've been really weak on as a school district. We, that's, that's not been a strong suit of ours. So Tiffany's been involved with connecting with them and also getting, getting the benefit of the Councilor Core Grant and what it's going to be bringing to all the school districts in the area. So at some point, we'll be able to pour down on it and demonstrate how it's been helpful for us. So very generous of BOCs to include us on that.
Yeah, other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to item eight, Report from Administrators. First up is the Superintendent Report.
We're off to a really strong start. So every, every place I turn, every, every person I talk to feels like it's a very strong start. We're, we have two, while we're a young administrative team with me going into my third year and into his second year in that role, and Tira into her second year of that role, and Seth into his first year in that role, there seems to be a good amount of, of processes already in place and a good amount of momentum in place. And I think that could really be attributed to just a really strong staff that already exists within the school district at, at all three levels, preschool, elementary and secondary. The staff is really strong and it's really showing up. Additionally, the two extra days of crack for the teams to get organized prior to students arriving, I think made a big difference for preparation and it made a big difference for, you know, our operations as a school district. If I was to mention a risk that we have as a school district starting this year, one of the risks that I feel is we're at the, in the Food Service Department, the Transportation Department and the Custodial Department, all three of those departments, while their staff, they are staffed at a staffing level that's really tight. We really could not, we would feel it if we had a staff member in any of those departments. If they were to get sick or if they needed to visit a family member for an extended period of time or something, we would feel it in any of those three departments. Just because we're staffed intentionally tight there for the purpose of having a budget that is intended to, you know, represent the highest possible salaries we can pay out. Our salaries have increased, for instance, at the teacher level by about $5,000 over the last two years. And that's been intentionally so to do our best to have a budget that's tight and represents compensation to our staff. Another area of risk or concern is you may have noticed that the Governor's Office, along with the Colorado Department of Early Childhood, is being sued by a case, the Colorado Association of School Executives and six school districts with a really strong nod more from the Rural Alliance as well as to how poorly the universal preschool program has been rolled out. It's, it's been rolled out in a way that is not very supportive of students with an IEP. And it's also not been rolled out in a way that allows for appropriate accounting for school districts to really know where we're at with our budgets. So while there is some celebration in the state that the number of preschoolers is up by about 10,000 preschoolers, we are, all the school districts are uncertain as to how many students we have, which students we can take and how they're going to be funded. So that is a budget nightmare, if you, if you don't mind a little hyperbole.
And that's gonna reflect on BOCs too, especially when we have students with high needs.
Yes, and BOCs has handed off the responsibility. They were originally the regional responsible party for rolling that out. And with the conflict they're seeing, they've handed it out, handed it out to a regional early childhood organization, which is probably more aligned with directly their mission. And not, not to mention that at some point, I wouldn't be surprised if the BOCs or if things don't get better quickly, I may be talking to this board about whether or not we join that lawsuit or not. Just to make, make a point. At this point, we're doing a lot of wait and see and I'll be getting more information at my superintendent meeting and attending, Tira and I are attending, will be attending more meetings to see how this is going to impact our students. But for now, our team has a very strong team at the Mankas Early Learning Center. Strong, seven strong staff members over there. We're fully staffed. We're rocking and rolling and the director is doing a great job. And the new administrative assistant, who's taking over from the previous administrative assistant, who's been there a long time, she's off to a very strong start also. And she's getting a lot of support from the elementary administrative assistant, providing support. In addition to, I mentioned earlier that I have a meeting with the regional school districts and the BOCs around the administrative unit discussion as it relates to Cortez. That's this Wednesday. And so there will be needing to discuss that. I've just had some collegial conversations with superintendents about that. And, and as superintendents, we're a little concerned because when the San Juan BOCs is already utilizing online services such as VocoVision, you know, to be in competition with Cortez for the same staffing of the tenured staff is only gonna make things more challenging and difficult. I've had several meetings with the leadership of BOCs. Either I met with Royce today in my office around our relationship with the BOCs and it feels very strong and very collegial and we're doing a good job. And our school district specialized director has met with our leadership team a couple of times just as we really solidify our ESS staffing. And we've done, we've had really good conversations and, and we're, we're making good progress there. And there's, there's, there's places for us to continue to get stronger, however, as we, as we work as a school district. So those are the things. Finally, I would like to just, just end my report. With the sixth graders are doing a really cool transition program tomorrow, Wednesday and coming back Thursday at Deer Hill. And so I'm anxious to hear the reports of how that is going. But that's all part of our transition program. But that's all part of our transition program and which, which is a complement to our transition program that we've established with Medicine Course between all three of our school levels as this gets transitioned to the next level through a transition program craft with Medicine Course and funded through the School Health Professional Grant for the next three years. And that's, that's my report. I could, in a nutshell, everything feels really strong. I feel really, personally, I feel very confident with the caliber of staff we have. We're, we're in a, in a very strong place and, and I'm not hearing concerns. So that's my report.
Do we have any questions? Todd, can I ask you something?
Yes.
I know last year, I don't know where we are, but she does look at that. Anyway, last year, we went down one special ed teacher at elementary. Where are we with that?
That was part of our, our staffing. And so we've hired a special ed teacher in this agenda here who's going through, who's not a licensed special ed teacher. She's getting support from our staff and OSCE staff to fill that full-time teacher role. And there's going to be a lot of support that that person is already receiving and will continue to even get more support. However, that there is a para position which is still open at that elementary level. And so we've had some staffing meetings last year with our existing staff. And we do have some staff doing some extra duty work, extra hours, for some extra compensation to help bridge where we do have a hole that was not built through staffing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, item D, financial, big boss?
Now that Travis is here, that's good, because I was just going to bring to, you know, Casey was talking about the roof leaking over there. We gotta get that fixed. Travis is able to secure one bid. He's working on getting another bid for us, but the current bid that we do have, let's give it to us at the beginning of July. And we're looking at $62,000 to fix that roof. I just want to brace yourself for this is coming, because we've got to get it fixed. And I know Travis, you've been trying to find another company to possibly bid.
I finally, I believe I have the second one that finally got back to me. It's all been either we're not taking bids or just not returning calls because everybody isn't. But a second company has gotten back to me, so we should have a second bid within the next couple of weeks.
Good, and then we'll hopefully get that going as soon as possible. Because we need to get that one out of the city and try to do it with the least impact on students and try to get that done. Well, we've required to get a certain amount of it. Well, in our policy, it says we, so we want to talk about that and try to, because around here, we're having trouble getting one person to give us a bid on a lot of things. And Travis has spent hours trying to, you know, get companies to return our loan. So we, we kind of want to talk to you guys about.
We want to make sure they're licensed insured so that warranties are good and that we can know that things are going to be covered. But yeah, in, in a small town and trying to stay local and support local, it, it's tough to be able to get more than one or two companies that have the ability and the time to come in and do it.
I could probably give you some names.
I know if you want to.
Yeah, I would, I'd be, I went through the yellow pages and, but I would be glad. And if I haven't contacted them, I will.
This pitch from all weather roofing, I don't know if that brings a bill to you or not.
No, these guys, they did the work on our elementary building last year.
Yeah.
They're located out of Cortez, so it's a, it's a local company.
So we're working on that. Just want you guys to be aware that we got to fix that soon.
Can I ask about clarification around what the roofing work was uncovered when we did the big project? Do you remember that?
I don't remember specifically what all roofs were involved with that.
I know part of elementary was because it was leaking profusely in the library, remember?
Chains, and they were, they were looking at that roof. And I don't recall what that was, but we're past, we're past their warranty time anyway, unfortunately.
Yeah.
That's what I have to ask, but.
From what I've been able to, to find, like the, the new cafeteria area, there's still coverage on materials, as far as materials there, as far as workmanship or any of that. It's, it's past that. And, and that's, we're, we're not having issues. We had issues with the scene there, but that was something that we were able to take care of through preventative maintenance to take care of that issue. And I believe that we have, the big part of the kitchen issue has been resolved. But we still have the neighboring roof on the little J G M that is beyond repair. Right now, we have tarps that we've patched with the best that we can just to slow things down until we're able to get it replaced.
And we did submit all this to insurance too, just to see if that would be covered, you know, with the excessive winter, whatever, but that got shut down, so we did.
The funds coming, the funds for this project is going to come out of the $100,000.
So it'll come out of our cap reserve, which will have around $238,000, I think. And then once we transfer that $100,000 over, that's budgeted this year. But as you can see, here's 62, I mean, this was in July, so who knows if the bid is still accurate? Hopefully it's close, but we're making out a large sum of money right, kicking from there right now. So we're going to do our best to keep putting money over there every year, we need to. But yeah, so it'll come out of cap reserve and over. Now, the only other thing I just wanted to bring up is audit. We're going to start next week. If I'm crazy, if I told Chris I might wish to get it done, so now I'm dying trying to get prepared, but he may be able to present the audit to you guys in September this year, which would be really nice to have it done and over and moving on. So I'll keep you posted, but he's scheduled to come in Monday, so I'm going to start that process.
It's usually October, right?
Yeah, he usually comes in September to do the audit, and then by the time he does his thesis. And we're, we're really there on the cusp of doing a federal audit again this year based on all of our federal grants. So we'll see what he says after he gets down with the Fandue comments. We're exactly where we are, but it could go either way. I mean, we're really within probably $10,000, from my calculation, on qualifying for a federal audit again. So if we do, that of course extends the audit process a little longer, so we'll just have to see where that falls. But he'll be able to tell me next week if we're going to go under that second audit. And then, of course, we'll be looking at lots of different grant audits that are coming up. The ESER grants, title grants, those federal grants, where we are going to be being audited for all of those as well.
And is that some of the work that Jen is helping?
Well, we're still trying to get her to find what's going on and getting her up to speed because we do have so many grants. I think that would be amazing if she could help with that, but I don't foresee that happening, you know, for this year. I think just getting her.
Maybe.
Yeah, hopefully the following year, she can hopefully do that. Because right now, there's just so much to learn as far as all that goes. But she, she's working really hard to try to dig into that, and it's complicated. She's working hard for it, so that's, that's our goal.
Just the timeline, I would think, would be helpful considering the amount of grants that we have in place at this stage versus three, four, five years ago.
Oh, yeah, maybe two years ago, we didn't have any of the grants. And, and they're all great, whatever, for whatever reason, but there's just a lot of reporting, a lot of mandatory things that we have to do to be in compliance. And it takes manpower, so that's for Jen, hopefully helping her out as well.
I have a question just about, when I was working through paraprofessionals in the higher areas all of that information, I was wondering when I saw some paraprofessionals being paid probably $7,000.
That's the update, that's the subject. It's this update, so I have the same question, but the agenda was updated to reflect that that person is a teacher, not a para, because I was in that concern.
Because it was, it was a mistake on there for ESS para. And so she's, she's going to be kind of considered a long-term, a long-term sub. She's going through her, in her, she's going in the programs to get licensed, sure, doing her classes and all of those things. She will be paid at a step one teacher, because at that time, they're supposed to take on all those teacher responsibilities. And so that's per policy that, that she would be paid at that step one rate.
So, so that's correct, that within the context, that's a teacher, not a paraprofessional.
Correct.
And, and then paraprofessionals have their own criteria or their own.
Pay scales.
Pay scales and pay scales that, that you're going with this. I, I think that was only the one that I saw.
Yeah, because it was way different.
Okay.
Emily was asking the same thing, so that's.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, so any other questions? Okay, so we have discussion items. The first discussion item is discussion item A, safety and security.
And for that, we have our safety and security director here, Mr. Travis Greenley, to kind of give us an update on, there's really two things. The progress we've made within the last year or so in that department, and also where we're going and how we're involving the community.
Yeah, so this, this past summer, a major focus for me was safety and security. And I wanted to increase my knowledge of safety and security practices. And so I went through a safety specialist academy that the state put on. It was virtual for a week and received my certification as a, a school safety specialist. And it was, it was definitely worth the time, and they were able to offer it free. So it was at no, no cost to the district. But through that, I, I did learn a lot that I've been able to implement already and that we'll be looking at implementing moving forward. A couple of things that I, that I wanted to hit on. We've received new admin radios through the School Safe Grant. And then we purchased some additional ones and are looking at purchasing a few more to fully equip our safety team to where they allow us to, to, to survey all channels across the district, but then also in a situation, we're able to bridge right into dispatch. And so we're able to talk directly to dispatch instead of being relaying it to them and them relaying it to somebody else. So we're excited and we actually went through some training. We had School Safe here to reprogram, and then we get our first radio check with dispatch this week to making sure that they could bridge in to talk with us. We're, we'll be having a stakeholders meeting soon, they're setting that up right now. And that will be all of the districts coming together with dispatch to kind of put our, our processes in place of how we'll communicate, how we'll do those radio checks, what would be communicated to who and where.
And Travis, if you wouldn't mind if I just interrupted a bit, that was some pretty, that was pretty exciting to be able to have our radio checks coming from the dispatch, dispatch station in Cortez as they called directly into the Mankas schools to, to hear that we could now connect directly. And then when we had our training on that just last week, the marshal was also in that training with us so that we were able to directly connect with law enforcement. And, and that was really helpful, just being on the, the heels of that regional safety issue we had on Tuesday.
Yeah, and, and bringing the marshal into the conversation. I, I have been meeting with him fairly regularly to make sure that they understand our plan, because then they build their response and, and how they will respond to our district off of what our plan is. And so we've had a lot of conversations. We met again this morning just talking about what that looks like and what drills we might possibly work together so that we can bring our emergency responders into our plans with us. I've also reached out to Jim Scrattle, Scrattling, who is the Monssuma County Emergency Planner. And we had conversations last year, but reopening those conversations so that we're continuing to, to work with them. And as they're reaching out, because they're reaching out with MOUs with the new communication process going in place just to make sure that everybody will be able to talk to everybody if that is needed. Yeah, we, we did already this year, as, as you all know, we had an incident that came into play Tuesday, second day of school. And, and I was, I was very, very proud of our staff, administration, each building, how they handled the situation, our teachers. For, for the most part, our kids, it was business as usual. And we were able even within it to do kind of a controlled release because we are unique, that we're three campuses in one campus. And so we had middle schoolers in the high school and a passing period came up. So which direction from law enforcement? And what we knew about the threat, we were able to release students in a controlled environment from one building back to their other building during the passing period. And, and so law enforcement, the, the school, and the staff, administration, all worked together in a, in a really, really great way to make that is, you know, unimpactful on our students is as we could have in that situation. A, a couple of things we have updated, the, that our emergency plan, our crisis response plan. But it's, it's continuous as well because there is a lot of new bases. We have new admin, we have new administrative assistants, we have new counselors, we have new psychologists. And so there's going to be a lot of new members that are a part of that safety team with the restructuring and the changes that have happened. And so that is, that is taking place right now, that those conversations are starting to happen to bring that new team together. One thing that I learned through that safety specialist academy is when you hear of school threats, that the one that you're focused on is a physical threat. But there's really three threats that we have to be prepared for. It's the physical, but also psychological and technological. And so making sure that we're bringing people in from each of those areas that would specialize in those areas. So where our counselors, our psychologists, our social worker are a part of that safety team, where Sharon, as our, as our health services, our school beings, our administration, keep with IT to make sure that we have a plan in place for any of those three threats. Because one thing, I, I, I mean, a lot of your physical threats, they stem from psychological threats. And so to make sure that we're, we have a plan and we're addressing each of those as we should. And bringing that team together to make sure that we have a district-wide team that is working together. And, and so it doesn't matter what building you're in, that we're defining and handling every situation that may come up in the same way and as a team. An example of, of that, and one thing that I learned, bullying is an issue that we deal with. But only 5%, and this is national figures that were given to us, only 5% of bullying accusations are actually bullying. And so we've got to know how we define it and be able to find it, because there's also peer-to-peer conflict. There's teenage meanness, there's, and, and those you handle in different ways. And we need to support our students in different ways with that. So we, we need to make sure that across campus, we're defining those. So we, we need to make sure that across campus, we're defining those, um, and that we're reacting and have plans in place for how we will address each of those situations. On, on top of that, through that, uh, academy, I was able to, uh, kind of build my network a little bit. And we'll have a state specialist that's going to be making a trip down to do a walkthrough of our campus with me, um, to be able to address what our situation is. He'll be able to go through our plan, um, and then help us to get to where we want to be. So we continue to grow and improve. His name is Brad Styles, and, and so that's in the process of being scheduled to where he will come, um, and give us some direct support in, in making sure that, uh, our campus is, is safe as it possibly can be. Um, on addition to that, in addition to that, I, uh, we have continued to work with our safety and security advisory council. And, uh, that will continue, uh, we will continue to meet. We've been meeting mostly around, uh, the subject of an SRO right now, and those conversations are continuing to happen. But we're also looking at how, how can we keep Mankas what it is, but at the same time, secure our campus and, and make sure that both inside our buildings and outside our buildings, uh, we're secured and to where we're able to keep our, our staff, our students, um, our, our campus safe. One thing that I, that I heard the other night in our most recent, uh, uh, security council meeting is, is there was a mother of a fourth grade student that is a part of that. Her, her daughter is scared, she is scared to come to school, um, because of that, the threat of a school shooting. And so that's, if, if there's one student that's afraid to come to school, we've still got a lot of work to do. Um, and so we'll continue to work to where every student can feel like this is a safe place. A, a major focus that we will be looking at this year, that I'm looking at, um, is our reunification plans. Um, how, how will that work? Because a- as we're seeing, there, there's more than one reunification plan. We think of that big, when there's a big incident and we have to leave campus and we go to the fairgrounds and we reunify there. But the other day, we were really close to having to put a reunification plan to have a controlled release of our students at the end of the school day, if that lockout wasn't, um, wasn't lifted at the time it was. And so we want to make sure that we have a plan, we want to make sure that our staff are prepared to be able to implement that p- plan. Um, and so, and, and we do, but we want to build that plan. We want to make sure that we're looking at any situation that could come. And so that is a conversation that I'm having right now with the marshal, uh, that we're going to bring Jim Spratling that into as well. Um, and, and it's probably one that we're going to ask for permission to drill before the end of the year. Um, and the ideas around that is we won't do a school-wide, but we will choose a population of our, uh, of our student body along with our staff to be able to go through that process and, and make sure that we're ready if that ever was to arise. The last thing, um, I know there was, there was a talk, there was talk last year about having our emergency plan available if somebody wanted to see that. Um, parts of it will be made available. Uh, we're, we're going to update our, uh, a, a portion of the website, um, with safety and security. However, I've learned that we don't want to make too much of it available. Um, we don't want everybody to know exactly how we're going to act or react in a situation. So I'll continue to learn what is best practice to make available, um, to the public and, and that will be updated on, um, our website. I, I think those were the big things, um, that I'm missing that you guys are, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, first, um, I just want to congratulate you on the radio, um, dispatch connection that you're working on and that you're achieving, because that's nature, um, when it comes to really being able to communicate, um, with dispatch, um, like when things are happening as, as, um, if something happens on campus. And, and that's, uh, you know, as you know, and many of us know, um, when there are incidents, communication is critical. Um, and when they investigate, you know, what's happened, if there's break down in communication, uh, it, it, it means a disaster. So I'm really happy to see that, that work's being done. I appreciate you updating us on, um, how this is going to be on, on the website, what can be on there, maybe what can't be. Totally understand that, um, just, just whatever you can put on there so that, um, people have some, um, clear understanding and confidence that there's a plan in place. One thing I did want to ask that I didn't hear was, um, how are teachers being communicated? What, what do you tell the teachers about your safety plan? Are they seeing the safety plan? Do they know what they're doing with the safety plan?
Um, yes, so we did, as part of that week prior to student starting, um, we did, I had a portion of the, the PD to where, uh, we talked through our, um, our standard responses, uh, to, to incidents. And so, uh, they, they were, they had shared with, and we went through what we would do, what they should do, what the students should do in each of those situations. Um, but we, we will, um, we will drill more this year, um, both, both looking at staff-only trainings, um, but then with, with students as well. And, and we're working, as I'm bringing that new team together, uh, working with administration to kind of set that schedule to what that will look like throughout the school year.
And thank you. And that staff, um, training, did that involve transportation, booth services, all these other folks? Um, not necessarily directly in the school.
Yes, yes, I, I believe, yeah, I believe that we had, uh, full, um, full attendance for that portion of the training.
Thank you.
So, um, I can offer a couple of comments. Um, first of all, Travis, uh, I attended this last meeting with your safety and security advisory council. I have to commend you, you did an excellent job at conducting a relevant meeting among public figures. Uh, and didn't get a public space where people couldn't ask questions. I found that meeting particularly int- very interesting, because you brought in a school resource officer from the Doris School District and other school channels, other areas. I want to just add commentary that, you know, I heard that mom too. And it was really poignant that she was there to try to figure out how she could support the school to make sure that her daughter felt safe. And she wasn't an advocate for an SRO or against an SRO. She just wanted to have a conversation about how can I make sure my, my daughter feels safe? And the conversation that I, what I thought was really neat was that we were talking about a campus, a pre-K through 12 campus, which most districts are not doing. Most districts are talking about high school or a middle school, and those SRO potentials sit in individual schools. You have an incredible challenge in front of you in that you are attempting to direct an emergency response plan for an entire district, where buildings are separated and there are a lot of challenges. And I'm sure you learned a ton, very happy to hear that you went through that certification and will benefit the district greatly. I want to make sure though, that the public understands that if they really want to understand this, that they too ask questions and start to really listen, because it's not just about bringing an officer on campus, check the box, problem solved. This is a very large, um, undertaking that will take time. And I want to address a rumor that I have heard in the public, which is that the marshal has already hired an SRO and that there is money there and it's done deal. And I want to make sure that we are very clear that that is absolutely not the case. One, the money would be pretty significant, and we're talking about funding multiple initiatives here. So I just want to be clear, if the public wants to know where we stand with school safety and security, they really should become more actively involved in that meeting, which has been going on for about a year now and will continue, if I understand correctly.
Yes, it will continue.
And that's the conversation to be had. If you want to know what the real deal is, come have the conversation. I learned a ton in one meeting and I, I feel like I have my thumb on the pulse of this district to a pretty great degree. So whether you're for it, against it, whether you know much about an emergency response, if you are a parent especially and you have a child in this school, that is one of those things that I would implore people to pay attention to. And I'm really pleased to hear that you are working on ERP. Um, I also am pleased to hear that you're connecting with the state, you're connecting with Monasuma County. Um, these are things that have not been done inside this school, I don't think in a long, long time, if ever. Um, maybe, I don't know, Tim's from Dallas, he's the knower of all things. But I don't know that we've worked on, on that high of a level to try to really nail down where we're at and where we're going.
Well, we've made some attempts in the past, like reorganizing the home systems and radios and much, it's been improvements over the years. This is much more focused and much more concentrated than it has been in the past, and likely so.
Yeah.
Statistically speaking, school shootings are rare, and statistically, school shootings are a very rare thing. But they happen and we need to be prepared for those kinds of things.
And this is about.
There are instances of an SRO, it takes care of too, it's not just that.
Exactly.
There's a lot of other things involved with the school resource officer.
I was blown away by the description that she offered as to what her day-to-day duties are. And, uh, it was really eye-opening for me that this was not a conversation of, do you need a, a school resource officer? It's, when are you going to need a school resource officer? And, and I really think that we're not focusing on school resource officer as much as we should be, because even I didn't really realize the amount of that person's like, it's basically everything you just wrote. It is emergency response plan, drills, reunifications, you know, classroom supplies, teacher training, parent involved, uh, parent training. It was extensive and it's what is really sitting in your lap right now, um, that another person could help with, even to the point of helping dean of students, helping administration, helping, um, you know, various, uh, staff members across the district. So again, all I wanted to do was say good job, I was really impressed. I really do want to implore that parents and the public, if you want to know what's really happening, come to the meetings, ask questions.
Can I just, um, ask, um, hitting that, can you tell us the dates that you have these meetings and the time?
So, so it's, it's been typically, it's been the third Wednesday of the, the month, um, and from six to seven o'clock.
And how is that communicated to the public?
Uh, so when it initially started, it was put out in our newsletters, um, um, and emails to, to all parents, to all staff, community that wanted to be involved with it.
Uh, but to Emily's point, if we're going to have an ongoing conversation with parents and the public, I think it needs to be regularly communicated through all those channels, um, so that we ha- can have a, um, cross-section of viewpoints.
Yeah, and, and that was the, the intention to start off with, with putting it out, was to have a very diverse, um, uh, group of individuals as an advisory council. And so, um, I took everybody that replied, um, and, but it was, it, I had the intention of limiting, limiting it at a number to begin, just so that we could do the work, so that it wasn't so many voices that we couldn't do the work. Um, I believe that we are at a point to where it can be opened up. And, and I think we can, we can do that through the council. Another idea that I had was scheduling some town hall, um, sessions to where we're bringing, inviting all community members, all staff, all parents, um, to be a part of the conversation. And so, um, I think we're at that point where the, the next meetings are going to be where they are advertised publicly, publicly again, and, and kind of looked at as town hall sessions to bring in as many voices, uh, questions, concerns, ideas, thoughts that we can.
I think that's a great idea. Um, and, and again, you have an open door, any, anybody can contact you, correct?
Yes, yep.
We definitely need to get, get that, uh, cadence of communication on a more, uh, regular basis, or where someone could say, hey, I want to be involved, I want to sit on that, that council. And the council really needs meetings and discussions, um, but I agree with you, it felt like a town hall last week, um, but it would have been even more, I think, significant as a town hall, and I'm sure she'd come back and do it. So hopefully more to follow, and we still have a lot more to watch.
Yeah.
This is not happening next week.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I have heard that the rumors as well, so, uh, any other questions?
I would just encourage that as we move forward, um, with the board and we talk about our own communication plan with the public, that maybe this is one of those pieces that we talk to all the various different stakeholders when we go and do that outreach that we did before, and then what we were, we were doing was escaping me. But, um, where each one of us, like, the linkage, thank you, that's the word. Um, I think that this, if, if there is progression in, in plans, I think we need to make sure that this is a, we need as a board, need to test the waters and give that communication as board members to all the various different entities, so that, um, this is an informed process.
And if, and if possible, um, it would be great for us to gather a, a, you know, a, a safe plan for that. If, and if the board decides that that's part of the topic for the linkage. And we have some information that we could provide, and, and some of your guidance, obviously, as far as what we should say, what we shouldn't say.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a nice to that. It'd be nice if we just had more information on, hey, about what that plan is just for us.
From a board perspective, I'll also offer, because you will be there with me, uh, when we go to Caspi this coming year, they always offer sessions on math school safety. And I, I think where my, maybe kind of raised awareness is that I went to a couple of those sessions and I was shocked with what I learned. And so, and that's why I can make the statement about a entire campus being a much different challenge than a school. So I, I would say from a board perspective, we should, if we're interested, we should, and I know you've attended them too, Tim, uh, because they're related to building and how schools are structured and so, so a lot of good resources. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you. Okay, um, next item on the discussion item list is Caspi Regional Meeting.
I just really figured, towards the one.
Yeah.
I had this figured for us, and yeah, I just want to say, it's October, I mean, it's September.
And I said Pam and Todd for the regional meeting, is what I found on my invoice I saved.
Same.
I just actually have Pam, Tim, and Todd for the regional meeting, but I thought I, I.
You should have had me, because I have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I can go.
Do you?
Yeah.
I'm still up in the air, I just let, you know, I think that like if I see a, if I see an agenda, I would like to, I, I would like to attend.
Excellent, glad you're here. So we should get that out soon, um, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'll get it out to you.
Yeah, I'm not trying to decoy, I'm just trying to utilize.
This is in the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions, um, Caspi? Okay, um, board candidate debate.
I think we discussed that we're going to try to get it to two hours. Uh, did someone have anything to say about this, other than it sounds like we don't get to have a moderator? Um, I did, um, reach out to Chris at K H J D, who is the reporter there, um, to see if we could do that. And then I also, um, reached out to.
I tried to message people.
Yeah, um, at the, uh, um, nonprofit at this, this weekend.
Oh, yeah.
But you're talking about Chris as a potential, uh, moderator?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yes, um, and then, uh, the Women's League of Voters is nonpartisan.
Yeah.
They, they put this stuff on all the time.
They probably have someone that they use as a moderator.
They do have regional, so I. They do have regional, so I did that outreach on Sunday. Um, so I'm waiting for that information, uh, to come back. And then, um, I think, um, yeah, that's kind of where we landed. And it would be two hour, and then we should probably talk about questions. Um, you know, I know Emily circulated that.
As a matter of fact, it's not a debate, it's a forum.
Uh huh.
Or.
Okay, that's a forum.
Yeah, because, yeah, but even so, it's gonna be on that first night, it'll be.
It's a conversation.
Yeah, it's a conversation for their, um.
And it will be.
How, how much they communicated on the website and how have they gotten it out to the, the community yet?
I don't think we have yet, but I think, I, I, we're this.
Cause I can already see how many petitions got approved.
Yeah, I think after this conversation, we'll be ready to do it.
I think that the, my biggest, um, concern is making sure Heather has, um, notified all of the candidates so that we can, um, so as petitions come in that that, that date is held for them. I think it's.
Then the next week, does the deadline have a turn bit?
Perfect. Um, and folks that have already turned in, make sure that they have those, so they put it on their calendar. Um, and then, uh, I think we can probably, uh, crack the, you know, the questions and maybe do, do we wanna do some outreach to the community or is, we discussed that there would be an opportunity for the community within the actual candidate forum to present questions that would go to the moderator.
I think that makes more sense because, one, it encourages people to actually attend and so that they can hear the answer to their question um, and submit their question. And I also think that, you know, there may be answers that are given to those questions before, um, they're writing them down. So.
Okay.
I, I, I absolutely agree with the fact that the public needs to be able to ask questions. And I agree with the two hours and, um, I think it will be time variable spent.
I'm strained, are we doing this?
I would love that. I would love to be able to stream it.
I think that should be able.
Shouldn't be a challenge. You can't really do that.
Right, cause they're gonna be, they're just gonna be here.
In the cafeteria.
Cafeteria. Or would you guys prefer the cafeteria or would you prefer the performing arts, uh, stage for the candidates?
I think the cafeteria is more inviting and informal.
Okay, I would probably need to abstain from debates about questions.
Sure.
Fair enough. I think as long as, uh, Victor and Pam and herself start with what I started, we can just kind of climb on.
So once we can secure a moderator, I think that's the first stage, then we can roll the, that conversation and we'll.
Okay, I'm sorry, Heather, when did you say all the, the signatures are due by?
The first.
So maybe you could have planned to have like the agenda out on the second or so for the event on demand.
That sounds great. And then I will, um, I can submit, um, or Heather can submit, whoever, um, information to K H J D. Um, to do a PSA on that.
Is there an issue though with just at least putting like out on the board and on the website, uh, school board candidate forum this date, this time?
No.
Without any agenda, just getting it out there?
No.
I think the sooner the better, I'm just letting people know what will happen.
And Todd, let's make sure it's, it's board candidate forum.
Right.
On my sheet, it's board candidate debate.
Right. And, uh, that's good. And six to eight P M?
It's just, I think once we have all of the votes, um, lined up, uh, that are, uh, have submitted and, and they are informed, then I think we can put out the PSAs. That's kind of how I feel like. I wanna surprise anybody. Who has a petition.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's move to the next one, board handbook.
I don't know, is this supposed to talk about where you, since you have updated version, uh, so, it's all of that. So the updated version.
I, I have a, a couple of questions for that. I've gone through that and, um, of course, uh, updates on, on several pages, but, um, especially on the superintendent's evaluation. Um, on the, the, the process, on the first page, I would prefer that we have the dates down, cause we do, um, you know, we have the annual and then we have a mid, um, evaluation that Katie brought, uh, brought to my attention, we had not done. We were supposed to do that in our July meeting at our retreat. And we didn't do that. And I did send an email to Todd, but, um, it got lost in the shuffle to put that on the agenda. So that we could talk about the evaluation, the mid-year evaluation that we need to do. We're already late on it. But I would really, the dates are in here on the second page, but they're kind of hard to bring out. So I think it would be beneficial to actually put them on the, the one page. The, the pages aren't numbered. Um, I don't know if you can see this, but it looks like that. And I would like to see the dates on there of the, the annual and the mid. So that's real, um, clear. And it would be nice if those dates could be added to our board calendar.
So, uh, during the work session, Pam, we talked about the, we're, um, in the process, process of creating that kind of calendar for us. So that we don't lose track of any board responsibility dates.
Right.
We'll make sure they're in there. And I like your idea of bringing it kind of to the forefront, to the top, instead of burying it in page two.
I think it's gonna make it easier to remember, you know, for everyone, if those are really, um, out in front. So, um.
Do we want to double down and do both? Do we want those dates, um, embedded in the board handbook? In addition to?
I think we could, but my, my original thought, and the board has to agree, was that we also take this calendar along with our district calendar and those get placed in this board handbook and just kind of are replaced annually. So that there's always a, the cadence calendar with the date count.
Okay.
And when that board handbook is provided to a new board member, they will then have a planning calendar for an annual, an entire year, knowing what that work would be at what dates. Okay.
All right, and then I have another one on the linkage plan page. Um, it talks about external and internal, um, conversations that we have. And the ones that we have listed are all external. Um, and we talked about meeting with the staff with the K twelve staff, or pre-K twelve staff, remember a couple of times a year. Um, does that need to be included in this since we have the words external and internal?
Um, I would, my question would be to Mr. Cordray.
Yeah.
As to what, one, is that easily accomplished during your P V day schedule? And what is that, when that would occur? Or would we have to do that outside of that? How would that impact the staff and the board from a tiny perspective is my question. Katie?
Yeah, I like the idea of it happening during one of our P V days. Um, and while those are very cool, especially with the commitment we made to like project-based learning and also uh, the opportunity to build community, those are built in the, the district goals, three days each. I feel like those are, that's nonetheless a really good day for it. And then also, being that it's linkage, I feel like that lends itself to a conversation, just kind of a, a listening session um, between both parties where, you know, the, the board has a responsibility to listen. Uh, while the staff docs and the staff has a point to really listen, and the board docs, just for the sake of building kind of a shared understanding and, and a good opportunity just to, for all voices to be heard.
Do we want some specificity around the topic? You know, one of the things that we just kind of alluded to, the, the safety piece of like having that be part of board linkage, would we want to continue that when we have those conversations? We, we honed in on a couple of topics so that it didn't get too unwieldy. And I do appreciate kind of having that listening piece, but sometimes if you don't add some sort of context or parameters around a meeting, it can get a little unwieldy. So, you know, my thought would be is that maybe that there would be whatever the board identifies as what we want to do linkage for the community, we then repeat that possibly with, uh, repeat some of those topics with, um, the, the district as well, that the staff.
My, my commentary to that would be, um, a couple of different things. I think that, one, we should be reaching out to, I remember we spoke specifically to the Durango School District around their practice behind this and try to do at least some best practice asked some other districts. Um, to, because I remember conversation around that at one point in time. And it was, the reason it comes to mind was because it was a balance of exactly what we're talking about. It was very strategic roundtable discussions where there may be four topics and someone felt strongly about this topic or that topic. And so there were discussions they could choose to be a part of. And, um, so it was more structured, but also casual enough that you weren't put on public display. Right? Cause that's hard to really communicate when you're sitting in front of an entire room of people, a lot of our videos speak up. So I would just, I would caution us to do a little bit of best practice to figure out the dates, so that it's really relevant and meaningful. And, you know, you could do something where it didn't impart too much into your P V days because you usually do a nice activity like in the morning. And you could just kind of structure that activity, maybe around including the board. Uh, I, I think there's ways maybe we could work together to do it. I don't, I hate asking of more of our staff. Although it's a really valuable ask, I wanna be mindful of making sure we're on target, not getting too far off base. And then be mindful of time.
So for the purposes of the board handbook, maybe I can just to, uh, for Pam, you know, maybe write out some in, internal, uh, some language that basically states the board will do outreach to the staff, uh, community, three times a year, um, based on topics out, you know, that they outline as, you know, important for that school year or something like that. Is that, would that work for anyone? Would that work for you then?
Yeah, I just, you know, in reading over it, our linkage is really outward, um, and it's not inward. And I just wanted to make sure that we don't miss the staff because they're a crucial part of it. So, uh, you know, that just when we use the, the internal and external, that the external we're good at, but the internal we had talked about. But we had never really set a plan yet. Um, and so that might just be another, well, for the new board to look at. To make sure that that outreach to our staff is, is communicated, that they're valuable and we need to hear their voice.
I can craft some very quick language and add it to this. Um, and then the new, uh, board members can extrapolate how they envision that.
That'd be great. Thank you, Katie. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Um, I think that was all I had. Um, of course, my, my workbook, um, is not updated with the new calendar and the new budget, that, you know, that type of thing. And I'm assuming that that's all gonna be done before the new candidates or the new people take their, their spots. So I'll leave that up to whoever's gonna do that. Are you gonna do that, Katie? Or is that gonna be, uh, passed on to somebody else?
Well, I sent Mr. Cordray the master, um, file, um, and so he has that. I could probably touch bases with you. I, I did update some of it. I actually added some of the policy language that we discussed. I can't, I can't refer to what exact policy it was, but it had the financial dates embedded in it that we discussed. That was just like, this is when you do the, you know, basically kind of your timeline, Chrissy, which I thought was really good. Um, so I, I did take the liberty of putting that in there, cause we all were like, oh, wow. You know, that's, that, that was really good to under, for us to understand if they're sustained. Um, so I can touch bases with Mr. Cordray, uh, let's say in September before the board meeting and have that anything updated. So if you guys have any additions, we can certainly do that.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to E, the discussion items, healthy kids survey.
Well, I can relate to sort of a round word. Um, every two years in the state of Colorado, about five departments of the state government get together and they collaborate on the Colorado Healthy Kids Survey. Uh, about seventy-five percent of the school districts participate and have their students in the middle school and the high school take this survey. The data that, well, the survey consists of, I believe, sixty questions. And the survey is designed to get an understanding of students' behaviors, especially as they uh, pertain to maybe unhealthy behaviors or, or dangerous behaviors. And it, and it gives, the data allows school districts and other state stakeholders the opportunity to understand a really broad understanding of the behaviors of teenagers throughout the state. Two years ago, as a school district, as with some other school districts, being that we were in COVID and for other reasons, opted out of being in the survey, only about fifty-five percent of the school districts participated. Um, and we had some community members at that time that, you know, shared with us that they were dissatisfied with our opinion to opt out of it. And so as we go into it this year, we have the option of, do we give the survey? And if we do, there's actually two surveys, um, of, two surveys at middle school and two surveys at high school of which we can choose. Uh, one is, one is, um, some of the language has been taken out to be, uh, more agreeable to a broader audience than the other. So as a school district, I mean, it's, it's one of those situations where we're trying to make a decision. And frankly, it's one of those decisions that, uh, we will not satisfy all parties. It's, it's a very difficult decision. Um, it can provide some really valuable information, but also it can provide information and ask questions that not everybody is comfortable with. And so we, as a board of education, it's proper for you because it really reaches the community. And we have to decide, you know, what is more best for the entire community, understanding that we're not wanting to meet, uh, everybody's needs and understanding there could be, uh, definite benefits associated with doing this survey. Um, so this board has the opportunity to, to decide, you know, which survey they, they want to give. Uh, they can also, uh, choose to, um, allow for an opt-out if they wish. Although an opt-in is highly discouraged, uh, by the makers of the survey. So I think for this discussion, I would just say that if we give it, we probably should either, um, not have an op system or go for an opt-out system if we decide to move forward. Just because the makers of the survey stay, loses validity otherwise. The board has had the chance to review the options of the survey. Uh, the board is, uh, I'm sure giving a lot of private deliberation to this in their own minds. And so I think it's now before, for the board to figure out what's, what's best.
So Todd, we asked you to find out if kids don't answer a question in the survey, will they even move on with the survey if they lose the answer to a question?
And the answer to that question is they do, they can miss, they can skip any question they wish and their survey will continue. So as a student's taking a survey, if they wish not to answer plenty of the questions, that's acceptable by the survey.
Okay, Todd, are they, are the students informed of that?
Yes, they're informed of that through the very explicit instructions given by the. Yes, they're informed of that through the very explicit instructions given by the moderator at the beginning of the survey.
Okay.
I, I will say that my experience, um, with Healthy Kids Survey has always been a positive experience because of the information that you get back. Um, it allowed the district, it allowed, um, the community to get a sense of the healthy, how healthy are population of students about that particular year. Again, you're talking about a period in time, but it certainly gave us a good idea of is there audit areas that we need to be, um, addressing, um, sooner than later. Um, and so, you know, when the state, you know, gives back this information back to us, it's only been a positive thing. And, you know, again, the community is different, but, um, I never, never run into community members or community being upset with, um, the results or being upset with their child taking this K, pre-K, uh, I don't know if it's K-12, but it's good. I think it's at least.
Middle school, high school.
Middle school, high school, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the greatest purposes of this school board is to improve student outcomes above everything. I mean, we have our jobs to do, but that is our, like, most important role. And I was, um, I, I was really impressed on the state, all the various different nonprofit stakeholders that came to the orientation, uh, the week prior to the staff. And I, uh, realized all of the supports we have within the county. And as I was doing research on this, uh, survey, I found out that this survey is vital to some of their funding. While we, I don't know if we typically are clearly are using these, this data internally, I know that the greater community is using this data to help get funding for nonprofit organizations for all different types of students. So, um, I think that if we use the opt-out, we are very clear to parents, um, and students. And, uh, they know what the survey looks like and they have that option to opt out. And we are communicating that. And I think that should be very, um, present on our, in, um, in our newsletters and on our website. And I think we should move forward. It gives us information about nutrition, bullying, all sorts of information that we could potentially then use for our own brand writing, for Make This United. So, um, and, um, so I want to honor families, uh, by giving them the opt-out. Um, because some of the questions are very difficult, but if the students can scroll through, I think that that is great and it could be a potential data pool for us to really understand, as Victor said, what's going on within our community. I will say, um, I did not necessarily feel comfortable with that middle school module that we were talking about for this student or the sixth grade student population. I don't know if you were able to find out whether we could take that off of the sixth grade. Um, because I feel that that, some of the, that topic was pretty young for that.
Right. To answer that question, no.
Okay.
For middle school, you have to decide whether, whether that module is included or whether that module is excluded.
Okay.
Those twelve questions.
I would, I would, I would exclude that just because that, that's my personal opinion. I wouldn't go down that road for, uh, because of that sixth, sixth grade population. Those are pretty heavy hitting questions. And I think some of that is touched on in the basic module. So that's how I feel about that.
Um, to kind of translate to what you're saying, Katie, um, I will bring up, I was a member of the community, uh, serving on DAC when we did this last time. And I remember reviewing the pieces of the data in the meeting. And it was really kind of mind blowing that what we were finding out around habits and things that people need to not bury their head up. One thing that struck me as I came to the school board was the number of times during our strategic plan review and our trauma-informed work and talk or discussion around social emotional learning, where we were kind of enumerating on, well, if we have the data or if we had an idea. So there have been instances brought up where we've kind of thought it would be nice to have data. This will give us data that may or may not, I think, be used within the walls of our district. Um, and I think it ties into our safety and security protocols and what to be at risk about. It ties into our trauma-informed practices and our social emotional practices. It ties to so many ways, so many places that it's worth asking the hard questions. And I agree with Katie, as long as we offer an opt-out, so parents can opt out. If they don't want their children to have to be included, then I think we're doing our job. And I would agree with her.
Question, um, how do parents get to see the survey so that they can be informed whether they want to be opt out or not?
I believe part of, so I did have an opportunity to have an extensive conversation with one of the representatives of the survey, just to gather information for this board. And what she described as best practice, which I feel is very consistent with, uh, Make This process and protocol, is to, uh, put it on our websites with some really prominent, you know, placements so that we could feel confident that parents are seeing the surveys and can see all the survey questions in advance. So that, one, they can decide whether or not they want to opt out their children if we move forward with giving the survey. Or two, it could lead to perhaps family discussions at home.
I would support that, sure.
I have one last piece that I did want to save, but the next cycle that we go through this, I would like us to have, you know, I, I would like the board to, uh, you know, kind of have a, um, a review or a narrative from the district and their partners to see how this, this data did that. I think that would be helpful for a new board, a new board to make the decision in the next two years.
Right. Um, I also just, I mean, you know, maybe this is a new board discussion, but really it is every two years. And so when we're not doing it in that year, as, you know, as we just talked about, we, we look for this information, we're looking for information about how kids are doing. And it helps us understand why that appears as they, as it appears or, or whatever we might be looking at, when we're looking at the objectives and the strategic plan. So we should have more discussion about what do we, what do we, what do we do, um, in the off year? When we're not giving the healthy, um, the Healthy Kids Survey? What kind of information can we get that maybe is our own, uh, survey from the perspective of, uh, a district type of survey? So that we can continue to at least get some information that can address year to year how kids are feeling, how they're doing, how safe they're, they're feeling and so on.
One of the things we do there, and it's hard to keep track because there's a lot that we do, is we, we have an ongoing subscription with Panorama Education. And they provide, they provide surveys to staff and students. And some of the questions that we've asked in the past, and we've been very consistent with our questions over time, so it's provided for a baseline and allowed us to evaluate year over year with Panorama is exactly what you talked about. But how, how safe do students bill, uh, uh, you know, in our schools? And then we can evaluate that according to previous years and we can evaluate that against the national law. And we use that ingredients. That's been really helpful information.
And that's been going on the last couple of years.
Uh, several, I think several years before I, before I was here. And it's continued. And, and I believe we do that on a cycle of twice a year.
When you bring that up, I do remember seeing some information about that, now that you say it. Um, that's good. That would be maybe then also part of discussion, um, during the off years. Any other questions? Okay, so, um, so we will, um, look at this again next, um.
Bring it on, it's time.
Um, policies.
I'm going to vote on, yeah.
Yes. That's it, that is, uh.
Catch one, we win.
Okay.
That will be pulled out.
Now, let me take that back. All right. Uh, second way you got to say that or?
No. Do you want me to do a brief update on the policy?
So let's go to policy F. I mean, F is policy, up the discussion.
Brief update? So the brief update is we are, it's been a long haul, a long road. We're within the three months of finishing review of CASB core adopted policy, uh, that was brought on for the district in April of 2022. It's been a tremendous amount of work and I commend my fellow board members for, um, putting the time in. It's a lot of very engaging nighttime reading, if you will. Um, but we're making our way through it and, uh, should be all of the way through by the, um, election date. Um, after that time, uh, we are working on putting together a system where, uh, as per our board responsibilities, we are reviewing policy on a regular. Um, and that will, uh, be shared within that board handbook we were also talking about earlier. So, um, a lot of work has been done. There's still a bit more work to be done. And that's, that's for now.
Any other question?
I have a comment. Thank you for, to Emily, your work has been incredible. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go down to, um, the last item, discussion item, section, principal and school leaders at meetings.
So I could, if, if it's all right, sir, I could start the conversation. Um, at the last work session, uh, we did have the three, uh, building school leaders here. We had the director for the Make This A Little Learning Center, the principal for the elementary school, the principal for the secondary school to provide information around the Healthy Kids Survey. And part of the feedback, um, that I heard from the board was that it was, it was helpful to have their perspective and it was helpful to have their, 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 them in the room to, to help with these important questions. And, and then I also, at the last admin meeting, I also brought up this subject with the admin team. And, and they felt the same way. They felt like there's a lot of benefit to building the communication. And, uh, they felt like it could really serve their buildings to have a continued presence, presence with the board. And then on the other side of the same point, um, they also, you know, expressed to me, which I completely concur with, that they have a lot of obligations and they take up a lot of their evening time and just a lot of their time. So, uh, Warren O. mentioned that perhaps rather than on a monthly basis, perhaps a quarterly basis or something to that effect, where we either rotate them through as a group or individually, that may allow for the best of both worlds. So that was just one suggestion and I just wanted to lay that as, as a possible framework for the discussion.
Well, I agree that it doesn't need to be every board meeting and taking up their time. And maybe like you say, I kind of like the idea of rotating through, having one of them here at each board meeting, but, you know, then they get a couple, a couple of months off.
Yeah, I think that's very fair.
Or if we have something big coming up that we, you know.
That's a great compromise.
Yeah, I hate to ask all of them to attend at every meeting, their mom meetings.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary, but like having Travis here tonight to update on the school safety, that was big, you know, that's, I'd much rather hear from someone sometimes than just read a report. So maybe there's, we, we need to find that balance, Todd.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering, I know you guys had this discussion and I wasn't at all last work session. So I'm just going to throw this out, maybe it was discussed. You know, I wasn't, I'm, I'm not so much feeling like principals really need to be at board meetings more at a work session. That's what I feel like is the most meaningful because we're talking about, um, in most cases, we're always talking about a strategic plan and school objectives, which has to do a lot with student achievement and growth and safety and, you know, all these different things. And I personally, for one, would love to be able to talk directly to a supervisor that's actually working day to day at the school. And that's an hour-long meeting of five to six. And it gives us the opportunity at least to see, that's the meeting that personally I feel like is the best meeting because that's where we can have some real discussion.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, I know they're busy, so that's, that's, you know, I don't, I know they're busy. But maybe that can at least be put out to them and see what their reaction or response might be to that.
Oh, Mike, I think they would love the opportunity. And I think the work session also allows for a less formal environment, which I think could also be constructive for, for both groups.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I like it too.
I do too, but play devil's advocate here. And maybe we could arrange our agenda. It would, I think it serves a great purpose for the public to be able to also hear from those individuals. And, and even though maybe they're not sitting in the audience, I do think that we get people who watch on Facebook. And I know we're talking about putting these meetings on YouTube. And I think that the platform for our administration to be able to speak to certain things that we are either reviewing strat plan or, you know, safety, um, there is a place for it. Uh, but be mindful of not having them stay for hours. So maybe we could try to find a way to have them come towards the latter half of the work session and stay for like a first portion of the board meeting and adjust on a quarterly basis or however, you know, so it's fair to everybody. But I really believe that the public should also be able to hear from them. And then they become more approachable and not, you know, where parents are like, oh yeah, I've seen that guy or gal or whomever, I'm going to talk to them.
Good point.
It needs to be a calcified plan. I think when you're building an agenda, I think you can say this work session needs these voices. Uh, this, this topic in the board meeting could use a formal report. I think that maybe just building that into the agenda building and having that lens through it. So it becomes an organic process as opposed to some sort of, you know, mechanical procedure that, uh, is, you know, just to become a dog in poliesha, right? Which is why we pulled that.
Correct. So I guess can we agree that we, uh, evaluated per agenda going forward depending on the work being done? And then if there needs to be a crossover, that we can, I would assume that, 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 that person or persons would, would want to participate if it's that important. Not, but not a standard expectation.
Right.
Yeah, the only problem I think, Emily, is the, the strategic plan objectives, that's basically the core of our work session. And to have them just at a half of it wouldn't be productive. They need to be at the whole thing. But that's just my, my opinion, but.
Well, I, I will just add on to that and, and that is, I, I feel like they're a resource for us to better understand the work that's going on. And the work session, we have deep discussions about the objectives. And that, that's not to say that there aren't important times that they should be at a board meeting in the public. That's not to say that that shouldn't happen. And maybe when it needs to happen, then we hold off them being on a work session and having just come to the board meeting and, and do some adjustment on the agenda to try to get them out of here as quickly as, as they can be. But I, I really don't see a time, there's not many times that we're discussing some critical work about what's going on in schools and they're the ones that can help us understand that. And so, you know, I just feel like we should say, you know, let's look at, let's start off with the work session. And so, you know, I just feel like we should say, you know, let's look at, let's start off with the work sessions. And then let's, if we need them at a board meeting, let's eliminate the work session and have them come to a board meeting to discuss.
And I put them early on for.
Okay.
Early on, yeah, where you just, uh, I just set an agenda to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on now to number ten, Strategic Plan PBL Objective Report. The Board of Education is following a governance process that evaluates the Mankas School District at every meeting through the strategic plan. This process ensures school district growth and focus on educational outcomes. Just an update on where I have.
Sure. So in consultation with, uh, Ms. Rar, um, three A and three B are really tightly linked. So she'll be presenting, uh, aboard that initial, uh, objective report of three A and three B for the September meeting. And then we'll be working to approve those, uh, reports in October. And that also does match our, I believe it matches our strategic plan work.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, let's move on. Number eleven. Um, board action to accept the objective report. We don't have one this, so we don't need to do anything now.
So I would move, uh, the agreement to accept action items A through M, O and Q as consent.
I would second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve action items A through M, O and Q. And we have a second. We have a roll call, please.
We're good. Oh, well, yeah, that's just, I say, that, that just leaves, uh, that leaves our Healthy Kids Survey, the Botman Discussion and the second reading of our, of our policy for individual. Wait a second, look if you, do you want to amend the?
Yeah, I would, I would amend my second by adding an R. So it would be A through M, O, Q, R.
And I can, I can amend the motion for that.
Can you amend that, please?
Yeah, well, I would, I would be amended motion with the.
Okay, so we have an amended motion for action item. We are going to approve A through M, R, O and Q.
Correct.
We have a discussion. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Katie Kehoe-Holby, aye? Cam Proffender?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim Hunter?
Aye.
Emily Hittson-Brown, aye?
Okay, so then, uh, that leaves, um, M, um, administration of the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey.
You need to make sure the public knows those were approved by the unanimous vote.
Okay, so, um, okay, so, um, let's have a vote.
It's just, you know, it's just a ritual. You have to acknowledge that that was passed.
Okay, oh, sorry. Yeah, just, sorry. Okay, so we have a five oh vote for the approved items, um, A to M, O, Q and R.
Um, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the administration of the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, uh, with an opt out.
Yeah.
A bit of a.
I would second that.
Victor, you can't. Victor, you can't second because you're conducting. I'll second it.
Okay, so we have, um, on the item, we have, um, the approval of the administration of the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey with the opt out. And we have a second on table. We'll be, I'm seconded on table, yeah. So.
Discussion.
On the discussion.
So the, the only discussion I have is in regards to which version we are doing. So. Um.
For sixth grade, right?
So, per, the information that we have, it's all middle school. So I would suggest that we do the modified versions of the surveys.
And I agree.
And I agree.
I agree.
And, oh, sorry, without the optional module for, um, you know what? Actually, no, I'm cool with the modified. I think if folks.
They have the option.
They have the opt out, they undo that.
They have the option to not answer questions.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we still have on the floor then.
Yep.
Um, we have, like, um, modules.
Yes, we're do, we agreed to the modified version.
Like the modified version.
And middle school. So that's the discussion and now we vote.
Okay, so now, um, we have, well, for a roll call, please.
Katie Kehoe-Holby, aye? Cam Proffender?
Aye.
Victor Figaro?
Aye.
Tim Hunter?
Aye.
Emily Hittson-Brown, aye?
Okay, so we have high highs for the approval with the modification for the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey.
Okay, and I would make a motion to act on the recommendation to remove the opt out provision for the ninth grade Botman Life Skills Training Curriculum.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have, um, we have a motion to opt out or want to remove the Botman curriculum. And we have a second on, on the floor and for discussion.
I am not in agreement to remove an opt out from a survey in which, or not a survey, from a curriculum in which topics are sensitive to certain families, even at a ninth grade level. Uh, it is my belief, and this is a personal opinion, which is why I said here, that if certain topics are sensitive to certain families, that they should be able to remove their child from that being part of the class curriculum during that curriculum. I cannot feel good about voting to remove the opt out. I am okay with the curriculum itself, um, but I want to offer that opt out to families of that the Botman curriculum itself, as it rolls into ninth grade, is still inclusive of an opt out as it had been in previous years, middle school, or in, I believe we're going to one year in middle school. That is my personal feeling, not entirely wrong.
And with the opt out, Todd, is it correct that this, this, it would, it would be able to opt out certain portions of that curriculum and not opt, you can't opt out of the curriculum per se?
Just the objectionable portions to that, and correct. And, and then as a, as a staff, we would provide, you know, appropriate, um, we would provide an appropriate option, something else for that student to do that'd be, you know, valuable for that time.
So to Emily's point, there's four, five or six, maybe modules within that curriculum that they might want to opt out of, which is a day or, or two or three of an entire curriculum.
That's correct.
Okay.
Gives families a chance.
I might have to vote with Emily. I don't want to remove the opt out.
So, yes, Pam, so the motion is to remove the opt out. So you, you all, you can vote no on the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so last, uh, roll call, please.
Katie Kehoe-Holby, aye? No? Cam Proffender?
No.
Victor Figaro?
Yes.
Tim Hunter?
No.
Okay, the motion, the.
Emily?
I'm the one that said no in the first place.
That's what remains.
Okay, the motion doesn't pass. Um, it goes down four one. Okay.
But you can make a new motion. You need to make a new motion to, um, to, um, accept the, the Botman curriculum with an option, uh, opt out for ninth grade.
Correct, correct. So I will motion that we accept the Botman curriculum to be in place alongside, uh, the health class in the ninth grade year with the provision of an opt out to be provided.
We have a second.
I second.
Okay, so, um, we have on, on the floor that we have a Botman curriculum with, um, the opt out option um, to be given to ninth grade, um, of the, um.
Yeah.
Of the discussion.
Yeah, so did we not already approve the Botman curriculum? We had our fully question on this.
Middle school.
Okay, that was my, that was my question. We'd already approved the curriculum from middle school. So this is just for the ninth grade and, okay.
This is approving the curriculum for ninth?
Yes.
And then with an opt, the discussion is whether there's an opt out.
Right. So we already approved that curriculum at one point.
At middle school, just for middle.
Just needed to be clear on that.
Any other discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Katie Kehoe-Holby, aye? Cam Proffender?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim Hunter?
Aye.
Emily Hittson-Brown, aye?
Okay, uh, motion passes by all. Okay, so, um.
This is public participation.
Done, public participation, anything? Okay, do we have any items that we need to bring over, um, to the next board meeting?
You're gonna love me about this, Tim. Um, we need to discuss our own board review and you were, uh, charged at the retreat to bring some information on how the board can review itself. Am I wrong about that? I, that's what my notes state.
I said that I would look into it.
Yeah, how's that going?
Katie, you nailed them.
Some votes, some words, so, so.
So that'll be on the, that'll be on the.
And I will present something at our next board meeting. I have not been reticent in that.
Of course, there'll be policy rolling forward, but we've already discussed that.
Any other items?
Uh, superintendent mid-year?
Superintendent mid-year. I'm mid-year then. For strat, then, which you already talked about, um. I would like to have an update. I don't know if this is the correct place. Um, but just to kind of keep eyes as a whole board on the emergency response plan. Um, because that was something we did touch on last year and we're gonna roll it forward to this year.
Yeah.
And as a board, I think our eyes prior to it going through that would be crucial. And I know that he's doing all the work. So even if it's just an update as to when it falls.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I think it's enough.
Okay, and for the good of the order? On meetings, folks?
Thank you guys for everything.